Call the Midland County Board of Commissioners meeting to order Tuesday, August 4th, 2020 at 9:00 a.m. And would you call roll, please?
Commissioner Snyder. Commissioner Glazer.
Here.
Twilliger.
Here.
Geisler.
He's here.
Where'd he go?
He's MIA.
Commissioner Dorian.
Here.
He's here.
Knowson.
Here.
Chairman Bowen.
Here.
Six present, one absent.
Now, I'd like to ask Commissioner Twilliger to lead us in the invitation and the pledge, please.
Heavenly Father, we come before you with humble hearts today. We pray for your supreme guidance and wisdom that only you can provide. We pray for ongoing support for our flood victims and families. We also pray for strength and perseverance for our county employees and are thankful for their dedication through this pandemic. Finally, we pray for heartfelt prayers for all school administrators, teachers, support staff, most of our precious children who are our future. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the approval of the minutes for July 21st for both the executive and the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes for the executive committee meeting and the board of commissioners meeting.
Support. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Okay, we will approve the minutes for July 21st and move on to the acceptance of the bills.
General Bank claims for the weeks of 7/13 through 7/17 approved an amount of $681,422.26 with total general fund expenditures $46,849.64. General Bank claims for the weeks of 7/20 through 7/24 approved an amount of $1,485,595.96 with total general fund expenditures $102,614.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend we pay the bills.
Support.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Okay, we will pay the bills and we will move on to our special program of the day. That is an update on the Enbridge pipelines and operations with community engagement advisor Candace Braddock. Thank you for being here, Candace.
Thank you for having me. And again, Commissioner Knowson, I appreciate the invite. It was a pleasure speaking with you. I'm actually going to set my timer here. So I am born and raised right here in the Great Lakes Bay region, lifelong resident of Michigan. And, you know, it's just, again, a pleasure to be here. I started with Enbridge in March, a week before the state's stay-at-home borders went into effect and right as the nation was closing its borders. And so I'm excited to be learning a lot about what's right underneath our feet, right in my backyard, Enbridge Pipeline and Operations. You know, you don't, a lot of us don't typically know how energy and transport and the things that are so vital to our communities actually, you know, impact us in our, like, right here underneath our feet, right? And so you can go to the next slide here. And right here, we have Enbridge. Been in Michigan for over 65 years, a company that's nearly 17 years old. And on a global scale, you can see it employs nearly 13,000 people right here in the state of Michigan since inception. It's employed over 108 individuals. Many of those who either work for Enbridge or operate and maintain our pipeline systems are folks who are right here within your community. So Enbridge pays a living wage, great jobs, living wages even to our subcontractors. And so that's a tax base that's right here for your community. It's number 12 of Global 100 Most Sustainable Companies and the corporations in the world for several years running. And we do an excellent job of including our stakeholders, partners, and indigenous populations within our decision-making and being all-inclusive. Our liquids pipelines are 28% of the natural North American crude oil. That's about roughly 16,500 miles. And as you can see, our gas distribution is to 3.7 million customers in over 500-plus communities. Next slide, please. Again, a vital link here to the energy supply within Michigan. And the odds are that 70% of the gas in your tank came from a Midwest refinery crude oil that was transported by an Enbridge system. So again, the refining demand in the Midwest here, Enbridge meets roughly 70% of that Now, I did mention before that our Line 5 specifically, that pipeline system that I'll be speaking about today, it runs from Superior, Wisconsin, through Michigan, all the way into Sarnia, Ontario. Next slide, please. So again, our assets in Michigan, more specifically Line 5, which is roughly 645 miles, it enters on the map there near Ironwood, Michigan, in the upper peninsula. And we have pump stations every 60 to 80 miles or so. Now, roughly 130,000 barrels per day are taken off our system in the Marysville location. That's in St. Clair County, so in that Marysville station. And we have connections to refineries in Toledo's BP Station and Detroit's Marathon Refinery. And so the remaining four refineries are across the border in Ontario. And what I did mention before is, again, how vital Enbridge is to the Michigan economy is last year we paid over $61.7 million in state property taxes. So we, you know, pay a large chunk of property taxes for right here in Michigan. And then even some of the line counties, some of your neighbors like Saginaw, Aronak, and Midland County, excuse me, Saginaw, Aronak, and Bay County, we pay a fair share of taxes to those communities as well. Now, as you can see here, again, the benefits to Michigan is that it meets 65% of the propane demand in the upper peninsula. And statewide, Enbridge provides 55% of the propane to heat Michigan homes or just in use in general. And so again, more specifically, the benefits to Midland County and the economic stimulus of how Enbridge benefits your community is that 14.6% of Midland County homes use propane to heat them. So that's significant, especially since Enbridge provides over 55% of propane to the entire state. And again, Enbridge pays $61.7 million in yearly statewide property taxes. And most recently, because Enbridge, again, is, you know, although there are no pipelines running through Midland County, we care about our neighbors. We have workers and staff who live in this community. Enbridge made a corporate donation of $10,000 last month to Midland Community Foundation for Flood Relief. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Next slide. And again, we have chemical companies within this area that have a reliance on the natural gas liquids that flow through our pipelines. So natural gas liquid is a primary feedstock and it is used to create a multitude of products that we use on a day-to-day basis. Now, with our economy needing to ramp back up because of COVID, pandemics, and other things that are happening in the world, how important is it for our Michigan tourism industry to boom and our economy to boom? So the feedstock from our natural gas pipelines is used to create kayaks, boats, umbrellas, as you can see, just canoes, boots, hiking boots. And again, right, we're kayaking on rivers, we're, you know, ski slopes, we need skis and that feedstock is used in the creation of products to produce a lot of the materials that we use each and every day. And the American Fuel and Petrochemical Manufacturers Associated, which, again, the major, one of the major chemical manufacturing companies in this community are a member of, they estimate that feedstocks account for 60 to 70% of their cost. And again, abundant natural gas liquids provide U.S. chemical manufacturers a major advantage. Next slide, please. Oh, maybe it didn't show. If you click it again. Oh, there we go. So I'm sure you've all heard of ways that, again, we have our Great Lakes Tunnel project within the Straits of Mackinac. I'm sure you've heard it all over the news where Enbridge is paying $500 million. That means the taxpayers, the state, they are, they don't have to spend a penny for this project. Enbridge is footing the bill for it. And we are currently, actually, I'm skipping ahead. Could you click again? And again. And again. And again. Thank you. Now, so we currently have our Line 5 pipelines that are running through the Straits of Mackinac. And the ways that we're protecting the existing structure is, number one, we're proposing a $500 million tunnel project to relocate these lines and actually create a tunnel where the new lines will be constructed underneath roughly anywhere between 60 feet at its shallowest and 250 feet at its deepest depth, a tunnel where we'll run the new pipeline through. Until we have all the permits in place and those pipelines are running, going to check my time here. These are what we're, seven ways of what we're doing to protect the water right now. So again, proposing that replacement tunnel in the straits. And we also have what's called weather-related temporary shutdowns. So we have buoys in place within the straits that if a wave of over eight feet, is it for over an hour or more than an hour, Brian? That it automatically sends out a signal and we instantly shut the pipeline down. Also, we have additional safety measures in place for anchor strikes. So we recently activated a newest, kind of like a text message ping for when ships are within a certain radius of our pipelines. We send them a notification and we let them know, hey, you're in an area where there's pipeline, do not drop anchor. Also, we have additional tools and underwater technologies where we frequently go down and we have underwater divers and/or machines that go in and inspect our pipelines. We have staff available 24/7 to respond to any emergencies or calls or any incidents. We recently, and it's not up here, but we recently launched a new ship that's on the water now so that we have a ship actually patrolling the areas in which our pipeline runs. And we actually have other enhanced safety measures at our crossings and invested millions of dollars in new technology. And also, we do have $1.8 billion in spill assurance money. And so you may have heard that in the news as well. But we've vowed, you know, Enbridge and will we be responsible should there be any incidents? We have $1.8 billion in spill assurance. And again, having the support of, you know, communities such as yourself to help us move forward with attaining the permits so that we can begin the construction of this $500 million tunnel project would be phenomenal. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, Enbridge will pay 100% of the cost. The Mackinac Straits Corridor Authority, they will oversee operations and own the tunnel once we complete it. And we went into this agreement with the Mackinac Straits Corridor Authority in December of 2018 under then-Governor Snyder. And this here is just a mock-up of how the tunnel project, its construction will be underneath the straits. So as you can see, it will be 21 feet inside diameter, so you can, you know, drive a small vehicle through there. The pipeline itself will be 30 inches in diameter. It'll be scalable. And it'll be roughly four miles, Brian, is that correct? Four-mile pipeline. And that will cost us roughly $350 to $500 million. Again, Enbridge is footing the bill for that.
Candace, I thought at one time there was going to be two pipelines. Is that not true?
Right now, we have, there are two pipelines right now within the straits. They're both Line 5, there's an east leg and a west leg. And with this, we are going to, again, decommission the existing pipeline and move it under the tunnel. Will it be just the one or will it be?
Yeah, so we're going to, we're going to combine the two existing, the two existing are 20-inch diameter pipelines and we'll have a single 30-inch.
Got it. Thank you.
Next slide, please. And right here, it just shows like a mock-up of the four miles of the pipeline at its, as I mentioned, at its shallowest depth, it'll be 60 feet beneath the lake bed and 250 feet at its deepest. And again, we'll have a tunnel boring machine, a TBM, that will, you know, slowly but accurately bore beneath that, you know, the layers there and go across the straits and so that we can put the pipeline in place. And we've received an incredible amount of support across the state in the form of, right now, I believe we have over 23 resolutions of support in various counties throughout the state supporting the Line 5 tunnel project. And again, we cannot begin construction of this until all permits are received. And so again, it's important for us to have support of communities and individuals themselves. We are currently, there's currently a public comment period for a number of the Eagle and Public, what was it? Eagle and?
MPSC.
Yep, MPSC are accepting public comment from individuals such as yourself to either email or write in your support for the Great Lakes Tunnel project. And today I brought with me some postcards. You can fill them out here or you can send them in yourself. If you'd be willing to do so, just send it in to show your support for the tunnel project. Next slide, please. And here is just the critical steps in building the tunnel, just the kind of the timeline that we have here for it. And it shows you what we've gotten completed so far. So right now, we're in the stage of trying to procure our permits. So we're in development and permitting. So we're hoping to get that completed and again, have your support. And as you can see, we're hoping to break ground on 2022 on construction of that project. Next slide, please. And as I mentioned before, we have our 23 county resolutions, the support that have been passed. As you can see here on the map, those highlighted in green are those counties that have currently passed resolutions of support. We also have dozens of townships and cities that have passed them as well. And again, this tunnel project is a way, oh, that's my time, is a way to protect the Great Lakes region. It's the safest and most economic and ecologically safe way to do so. And I thank you for your time.
Do we, if anybody have questions for Candace? Yes, Commissioner Twilliger.
Just a quick question. You did answer the one because I look like, when are you going to kick this off? So you did cover that. So there must be an initiative that's connecting with our northern and eastern neighbors. So how, how do you expect that to go? Meaning Ontario, Canada? So they're, they're very much impacted by it as well.
They are. And so with, you know, Ontario, the city of Sarnia, actually, the mayor, if you want to call it, yeah, the mayor of Sarnia has also submitted a resolution of support. So we have, yeah, for that community, yes.
Because we can be on board, but you're dead in your tracks if you, because it flows right through.
Correct, yes.
Blue Water Bridge, so.
Yes, yep. So we have support there.
Any, Commissioner Knowson?
Yeah, just back on the previous slide, I get the direct relevance to the UP. I assume that the pipeline follows that green line right on down.
It does, yeah.
And it, there are no, there is not a pipeline within Midland County. I just want to clarify.
There is not a pipeline in Midland County. We just wanted to illustrate the importance of the economic factor and job creation and the reliance of local chemical companies on our product.
It doesn't look like it's too far into Bay County though, so fairly close to Midland County, I would think, right? Or is it right downtown whereabouts in Bay, is it? Does it run through Bay, right?
It's like Monitor Township.
Okay.
Kind of mid-Bay.
Okay, gotcha. And Brian, I didn't recognize you with your mask earlier. As soon as you took your mask off, I'm like, hey, that's Brian.
Yeah, a lot of, there's a lot of employees based in, you know, our office in Monitor Township, that living room here.
Yep, yep.
I'm one of them. My living room is in County.
And if we hit something to you within two weeks, is that sufficient?
That would be sufficient. Thank you very much. May I leave some postcards here for as well?
Sure.
Also, yeah, one other thing we talked, we have some examples of resolutions from counties. Could you send those to us as well?
I certainly will. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Take the glasses. Yeah, I know. Okay, so at this point, I'd like to ask if there's any public comment on anything that is not on our agenda today. Is there any public comment? Okay, without seeing any public comment, Ann, would you read committee report number one, please?
Date of July 31st, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, your Administration Operations Committee, recommend approval of the request to waive County Policy 303.3 in regards to soliciting bids for the purchase of supplies. We further recommend approval of the request to enter into a two-year agreement with Valant Biosciences for the purchase of Larvicide for the 2021 and 2022 seasons. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson, Eric Dorian, Administration Operations Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A&amp;O Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 78-7-20.
Do we have any public comment on this? Do we have any commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Commissioner Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Knowson.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Chairman Bowen.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent. Motion carries.
Committee report number two, please.
Date of July 31st, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, your Administration Operations Committee and the Finance Committee have reviewed the grant application with the Michigan Department of Treasury for the First Responder Hazard Pay premiums program. We recommend approval of the request to apply for this grant and authorize the Administrator Controller to amend the 2020 county budget for the associated wages and price of cost if the grant is approved by the state. We recommend that all bonus payments be contingent upon the approval of the grant application and signed letters of understanding from all three collective bargaining units. Furthermore, these payments will not be subject to retirement or included in final average compensation calculations, defined contribution payments, retiree health care, or any other benefit other than payroll taxes. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson, Eric Dorian, Administration Operations Committee, James Geisler, Vice Chair, Eric Dorian for Scott Knowson, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A&amp;O Committee recommends Agenda Item 79-7-20.
Would you like to include finance in that also?
Yes. The Finance Committee recommends the adoption of Agenda Item 79-7-20.
Do we have any public comment on this? Any commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Commissioner Knowson.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Chairman Bowen.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent. Motion carries.
Committee report number three, please.
Date of July 31st, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, your Administration Operations Committee and the Finance Committee have reviewed the amendment to the 2019-2020 comprehensive agreement with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. The term of this agreement is from October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2020. This amendment provides for an additional $152,536 in funding for the Midland County Health Department for facilitating the delivery of health services specifically for COVID-19 response. We recommend approval of the amendment to the grant and the Administrator Controller be authorized to amend the 2020 county budget accordingly. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson, Eric Dorian, Administration Operations Committee, James Geisler, Vice Chairman, Eric Dorian for Scott Knowson, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A&amp;O Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 80-7-20. And the Finance Committee recommends the adoption of Agenda Item 80-7-20.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Any commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Commissioner Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Knowson.
Yes.
Chairman Bowen.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent. Motion carries.
Okay, we have no RPCs today. That was the ending of our standing, ending of our standing committee reports. But we have one item of old business. Ann, would you read that, please?
Date of July 30th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. The Board of Commissioners met in closed session and considered the performance of the Administrator Controller and her contribution to the county's accomplishments during the past 12 months. The conclusion of the Board of Commissioners after the performance review is that the mutually agreed goals and objectives for 2019-2020 were predominantly managed and/or completed in a manner that exceeds expectations. Respectfully submitted, Mark Bowen, Chairman, James Geisler, Eric Dorian, Scott Knowson, Midland County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the adoption of Agenda Item 66-6-20.
Thank you. Any public comment? Any commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Commissioner Knowson.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Chairman Bowen.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent. Motion carries.
We are going to move on to commissioner comments now and start with Commissioner Glazer.
I just appreciate the presentation from Enbridge. I thought it was very informative and answered a lot of questions that I had and very timely. So glad to see they're moving forward with this and also commendations to, I guess, our legislature for the, for the grant for $100,000, well, for the grant for the first responders. They're certainly well-deserved. It's been a stressful time and certainly give thanks to everybody who's been on the front lines throughout this COVID virus event, so, and everything else that's been going.
And a flood.
Thank you very much. Yeah.
Commissioner Twilliger.
Yes, I would just like to wish everyone well at its primary and, and looking forward to the results. And it's good to get this out of the way so we can move forward with the general election. Thank you.
There we go. Commissioner Geisler.
Today's the 4th of August. Get out and vote.
Commissioner Dorian.
I'd like to just tell my brother and sister-in-law happy anniversary.
There you go. Commissioner Knowson.
I also want to add my personal thanks to all the first responders. A lot's been said about these two disasters. I don't need to belabor it. Just thank you for all your time and effort. Maybe a little bit of cash will help a little bit. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. I echo the same, same thoughts. So thank you guys for what you do. And also like to say to Bridget, good job and, you know, you put in another great year for us. You're doing a good job. Okay, let's move on to commissioner meeting schedules and start with Commissioner Glazer.
This Wednesday, tomorrow, I have a meeting with Porter Township. So I look forward to meeting with them. Monday evening, the 10th, I will be connecting in with Lee Township. They've been meeting remotely over the telephone, so I will participate there. Tuesday, the 11th, we go up through the 18th, correct?
That would be correct, yep.
Yes. The 11th, Greendale, meeting by phone. Jasper has been meeting in person, so I will attend those. And that will be all.
Commissioner Twilliger.
Yes, I have the 12th, I have Craxton's meeting and that will be on Zoom. On the 13th, I have both Drug Court and Pine Crest, and those are both Zoom meetings. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Geisler.
Finance and, and on the 11th, and A&amp;O also. And then on the 18th is the executive.
Thank you. Commissioner Dorian.
Human Services is scheduled to meet Monday, the 10th, at 2:00, probably in this room. That's all I have.
Commissioner Knowson.
Yeah, Finance Committee, meeting on the 11th at 1:30. Also, on the 13th, I believe, we have General Retirement at 10:00. Also, on the 13th, I believe, we have general retirement at 10:00, retiree health care at 2:00 PM, our funds. Just want to point out MAC Annual Conference, starting on the 16th of August through the 19th. That is virtual. You guys know that Tom Izzo is a guest speaker and a number of pretty interesting presentations. So if you haven't signed up for that, I think you still can. Is that right? Okay, and that's it.
And all I have is Retirement Board on the 13th to announce also. So with that, I think that's the end of our business for the day. Move to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. This meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, August 18th, 2020, at 9:00 AM to meet in an executive session of the Board of Commissioners and for the committees to resume their duties. Thank you. Everybody, have a good day.
Thank you.